That's what I said.
Yeah.
Do you want me to do the camera? Okay, on the background.
Oh, yeah.
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the first budget workshop of the fiscal year 21 budget season on June 3, 2020. And at this time, we will dispense with any of the preliminaries, but I would like to ask Amy Cannon if we have any addition to the agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we wanted to share a few schedules in the recommended budget book. Monday morning, I had the opportunity to provide the board with details of what was in the recommended budget, but some questions you may have is what did departments actually request? But, Mr. Chairman, we would also ask that the board add an attorney-client session under
Okay, do I have a motion?
Submove.
Okay. Motion is to add attorney-client to the agenda and discussion. All in favor? Where's McClaren? Is that unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. It is unanimous. Thank you, Mike. Yeah, Mike Booze, Commissioner Booze will be joining us remotely. Everybody else is present. Thank you very much. We'll begin our discussion of the budget with a few words by Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I hope most of you brought your budget books back this evening, but I thought that we would walk through some of the specifics in the recommended budget. The general fund actually starts on page 29 with the revenue section. Again, the total recommended revenues are $315.5 million, and it's balanced by an appropriation of $9.6 million. As we've done in the past, we've provided each revenue category line item, have provided some historical information, and we also have provided if there are significant changes or anomalies, our budget staff has gone through and tried to provide some answers about why there are changes between actual and budget. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that, so while we're on this page, while leaving, you balance the budget at 325, but the $9 million came out of fund balance, so that reduced our fund balance down. That came out of fund balance and wasn't from revenue because we were short on revenue?
Yes, sir. Each year, we have an appropriation. This year, because of our revenue shortfall, we actually had to appropriate $1 million more than we did in the prior year, and the amount we appropriated was $9.6 million.
Which reduced our savings and our reserves.
Yes, sir.
So we had to use money to be able to do that.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I just wanted to make, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that, we're happy to stop and answer any question you have.
Okay.
And then, on page 33, we begin with the expenditure section, a pie chart that basically shows you the different functions of county government and the percentage of the budget. And then, we have an expenditure summary, the same summary that you saw for revenues, and it's really by expenditure category or county department. And again, we have some historical actual information, last year's budget, the year-end projection, as well as the recommended budget. And again, the budget staff has included information for anomalies greater than, I think, 7%, but more than 10%.
Okay, this is an informal session, more or less, so, you know, feel free to stop, Ms. Cannon, anytime for any questions. Normally, we'd be in 564, but because of the distancing involved, we're in here because we can be in here. Mr. Keefe, what do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I think it's a solid budget. I think there's, I can tell there's been a lot of room. I am deathly afraid that we had to borrow money, more money out of our fund balance. Sorry. I am concerned that we had to borrow money, but in spite of what all is going on, we really don't know when the end is. So being fiscally conservative and prudent is a good idea. I did notice on one particular line item that caught my attention was facilities maintenance.
Will you tell me what page, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, page 35?
Yes, sir.
That there was almost $1 million more that they actually, there's a, there was a $1 million more actually, $1 million less actually spent in 2019 than 2018, and it went up a little bit, about 20% for this budget cycle. And I saw your notes where we're getting defibrillators in there, but I was concerned, why did facilities maintenance almost be reduced by half, more than half a year prior? Do you have any idea?
That may have been the move to actually go to a contracted service, custodial services in the evening. Can, does the budget?
So, in the transition from fiscal year 18 to 19, we implemented the capital investment fund, and so $1 million of, like, higher level type?
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense. Thank you.
You were with a billion, didn't you?
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, we had a bar next to a million, and there's a million there. I was trying to put it all together. Okay, thank you.
Pretty serious money, right?
I did fail to mention, Mr. Chairman, we have, I don't have all the answers, but I have staff who do. I'll do my best, but I am going to need to call on the experts in the room along the way. Are there any other questions about expenditures? If not, we can, okay, yes, sir.
The only one I have, I guess, is that I was looking at the Board of Elections.
Okay, tell me what page you're on.
We're still on page 35.
Okay.
And, you know, we were talking about having to buy all those machines, and, you know, I guess with the Board of Elections is considering COVID-19, and we don't know what it's going to look like, you know, that gave me a little concern because if we do it by mail or do whatever, it's going to increase whatever they do over there. There's going to be increase at the Board of Elections, I think, no matter what happens because of COVID-19.
So I believe we funded most of the requests for the Board of Elections.
Yeah, it was about 17 off. That was, I just think it's going to be, in that, for '21 was 1-6?
Yes.
And at the end of this year, I just think there's just going to be, and you can just revisit that, and you may be able to tell us at the next meeting.
We can.
But I think if we talk to them over there, they have no idea what's going to happen in November and from henceforth.
Mr. Adams, one thing we do know is that the Board of Elections does intend to implement some protective measures to assist with social distancing, and we do anticipate being able to charge some of that to the CRF funds.
Okay.
As well as FEMA, so some of those, but not all of it.
Well, you know, I just, come November, that's going to be a whole lot, because if you got 72 sites open.
Certainly.
I mean, that's a tremendous amount in terms of all of that distancing when people go into the polls to vote. I just tell you to be careful with the Board of Elections. I think that that's, you know, I know that we got the money from the state and stuff, but I just, 72 sites just kind of worry me in terms of social distancing.
You know what you can add to that potentially? Postage.
Well, that too, that's what I'm saying. It may be by mail. I think that that budget item is one that we really need to look at and be careful about because of what's going to happen, even with the extra money that comes from the state.
Certainly.
Maybe if somebody turned theirs in, we could ask for some of that, but I think that's going to be an item, Madam Chairman. We just need to keep an eye on the Board of Elections. I think that thing can wreck our budget.
And in the planning, they've also expressed concern for the safety of their pole workers.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, at the 72 sites.
Certainly.
And you talk, you know.
Any other questions this time? Okay, proceed, Ms. Cannon.
So we'll go to the next section. It's under the section of personnel. It's actually page 43. This is where we get into some of our detailed schedules that show what departments requested and what was recommended. And just from an overall perspective on page 43, this is the schedule for new positions. We had 16 positions requested. You can see the department and the classification on the left. We actually recommended two new full-time positions, one in the Department of Public Health. It's actually a case manager slash social worker, two. This is a position that will be working cooperatively between Public Health and Department of Social Services. And then, we have a deputy register of deeds position that was also recommended. Two out of the 16 were recommended.
I can't see Commissioner Booze. Commissioner Booze, you don't have your hand up to anybody? Commissioner Booze, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I have no questions at this point.
I understand. They just, they had, they had a long view and didn't have you in the shot, and you'd be over there raising your hand, and you'll have to just holler at me, make sure you get my attention, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
I thought that was Mr. Hemingway.
Mr. Hemingway. He might get, he'll have to take, well, he's a candidate.
On the next page, which is page 44, we actually abolished 12 positions at a total of $600,926,000. Many of these were recommended by the departments, and so we're happy to answer any questions about those.
You mean the abolition was recommended, was recommended, is that correct?
Pardon me?
They recommended that you abolish them. Is that what they're saying?
Yes, yes. It was a cooperative effort. We didn't go in slashing, but there were some changes in departments over time where we added positions and then we deleted some, so the total of 12 were abolished.
And they were open positions, is that correct?
Yes, sir. They were all vacant positions.
Somebody's cutting the grass in this room.
Okay. The next section is the new vehicle request on page 57. As you know, on Monday, we talked about a significant number of vehicles being requested. There was a total of 66 requests for new vehicles. You can see the different departments on the left-hand side of the page. The largest number were in the area of public safety and law enforcement. Due to limited recurring revenue, only 18 were actually recommended at a net cost of $954,000. We actually went through a detailed process of prioritizing each vehicle based on weighted average. That weighted average was based on the mileage, the age, and the maintenance cost to come up with a risk factor, and those with the highest risk factors were the ones that were actually recommended for replacement.
And I guess, and I think on Monday, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I didn't see her till you already talked.
And I guess, we're going to get on the schedule. I think that's what you were talking about on Monday, because each year, we get all of this huge request as opposed to some kind of rolling kind of request. It seems to me we should kind of have some kind of rolling thing that's going on.
One of our goals this year is to develop a formal replacement policy and put those procedures in place, and that's why we asked to set aside $3 million in the capital investment fund, fund to appropriately determine the vehicles to be replaced. We also want to conduct a utilization study. So we handle, and I'm not talking about travel to conferences. I'm talking about transportation related to daily county, your work mission in a department, and we do that in a variety of ways. For example, our maintenance staff, that they drive their own POVs, so they get a monthly stipend. The inspectors in planning and inspections, they get paid by mileage. They drive their own personal vehicles. So there's two different ways we manage that. In the Department of Social Services, there's a tremendous amount of travel in DSS. There's a transportation unit. We have vans to transport people to medical appointments as far away as Chapel Hill and places like that, and we provide vehicles. But social workers spend a lot of time on the road transporting foster children, and so we spend almost $1 million in mileage for those employees, and there's a risk factor transporting children in their own POVs. So that utilization study will really take a look at our program from a very global point of view and make recommendations. Should we be providing more vehicles in the Department of Social Services? Is that more efficient? Is there cost savings? Does it eliminate some of our risk factors? That's the utilization study that we want to work on this year, along with developing formal policies.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Council?
A part of my question, I know that there are other departments that need vehicles, and we were going to have the study, but yet we were still spending $1 million this year.
There are some vehicles that absolutely need to be replaced. We do need to replace some vehicles each year, and again, we came up with that weighted risk factor to be able to allocate the limited funding and do it in the most equitable manner.
Okay. I'm still on my health kick, because I'm thinking that we're going to need some COVID ID is not over yet.
Yes, ma'am.
And with social distancing not being applied right now, there's no telling what we're going to have coming up in a month or so. So I know those nurses have to go from place to place. That's in the back of my mind.
There are a lot of unknowns with this budget. There are a lot of things, we're going to have to monitor revenues and expenditures very diligently every month.
And I wonder, every time I think it can't get any worse, it does. So I'm not going to say it can't get any worse.
Thank you.
Ever again, because there's so many unknowns that we have to deal with.
Go ahead, Misses.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
If there are no other questions on the vehicles, we'll move to capital outlay. The capital outlay schedule is on page 59. We had capital outlay requested totaling $202,000. Now, be mindful, many of these, this capital outlay was related to new positions, such as under animal control, a weapon and a taser for a new position that was not recommended. So the capital outlay that was recommended was for the detention center, a total of $41,600 for 32 replacement tasers. Yes, sir.
Two questions. How often do they have to be replaced? You don't, you have an idea?
We've been replacing some tasers each year. I think it's, that's an area that you, that we have so many of them, that we replace a number each year.
For the last, for the last couple of years, we've been replacing that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Are they for sale?
You're too far away.
I'm looking for one. Uh-oh. Can they be used?
I'm afraid not. I'm afraid not.
It's illegal. Okay, never mind, I'm not seeing them.
Did you notice how much cheaper the gun is than the taser? Did you notice how much cheaper?
On page 60, we have the capital outlay request for other departments. I mentioned in the presentation the other day about solid waste equipment. We're actually replacing $1.9 million or recommended $1.9 million. Actually, $800,000 is related to replacement of a fire suppression system. If you may remember, that old baling plant that we've been using, we use it now for recycling, and we have been notified by a state agency that that system is inoperable and needs to be replaced. So that's $800,000 of the 1.9. We have a dozer and an excavator, dump truck, and we're also going to fence in the perimeter of the landfill for safety purposes. In the inmate welfare fund, we recommended $100,000 replacement of commercial washing machines and dryers in the detention center. For federal drug forfeiture, we recommended $32,000 for a drone, and that's the total for all of the separate funds. The next page is related to the proposed fee schedule changes. And again, I mentioned on Monday, the most significant change is in the area of planning and inspections, and that's why I asked our new director, he's not new anymore, he's been here with us for quite a while, to be with us this evening. This is a significant change. Rawls and his staff spent quite a bit of time taking a look and digging through that fee schedule. We also had a business intelligence review, as you know, as a part of putting in that new software solution that's customer-friendly and is comprehensive, and we'll talk, each piece will talk to each other. Business Intelligence did a detailed review of the business processes in that department. I think that was kind of the springboard for taking a look at these fees. So many of the fees, some increased, some decreased. We changed the way that the fee is actually applied, and many of them were reduced to a single fee. And so there's a tremendous amount of information here, and so I'm going to pause and see if you have any questions, and with this one, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Howard to come forward if there are questions.
I've got a few questions, because I, and I guess, my first question, he may not know, and you may know.
Yes, sir.
Madam Manager, when's the last time we raised any of these fees would be my first question?
It's my understanding it's been about 10 years since we had any fee changes.
Because I, you know, I just, some fees went from $50 to $200, from zero to $3,000. I mean, those are some gigantic increases in a year. I mean, is it that some of this might have been phased in over a little bit of time, or did you look at other places? Like, I'm looking at the, and I don't even know what that is, the site plan review wireless communication facility. I guess that's a new tower?
Yes.
It said zero, and it went to 3,000. I don't know what that is, proposed fee.
Will you tell us what page you're on, Commissioner Adams?
61.
Okay.
61 where you are. And I don't know if you have this in front of you, so.
No, I've got it here. I've spent a lot of time on this, Commissioner.
I know you did. And then, like, the group development, greater than five years, went from $50 to $200. I mean, those just look like, and the only reason, any normal year, I might say I don't have a problem with that, but in this COVID year, when a lot of these businesses haven't been able to get out and do the things that they normally do to do the revenue, is can we phase some of this in to help them out, or as opposed to just going from zero or those large numbers? That's, I guess that would be my concern. I mean, it's just, everybody's taking a hit this year.
Sure, yeah. With your permission, is it okay if I back up and address the comparables?
You back up everything, huh?
Okay, so.
Well, I tell you what, we might can get Mike Booze's question answered at the same time, so I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Booze ask his question, and you can address all of it.
Well, it's, it's a good call because it's very similar to Glenn's. One of the ones I noticed was a three times amount from 100 to $300 fee on the mixed, the mixed materials, and then, like you said, if we could start it, if nothing else, next year with like a three-year plan to go from zero to 3,000, or a three or four-year, or just constantly figure out, since we waited 10 years, increase everything by 10% or something. So I just want to piggyback on Commissioner Adams that fee increases are never appreciated. They're just going to be passed on to the original users and disposers, and this is probably the worst year of all. Booze could say, you know, surprise. So if we could stagger it in, I'd be, if Glenn makes a motion to that effect, I'd be inclined to second it.
All right, and then Commissioner Keefe, anybody else got a question before Rawls starts?
Thanks. And Rawls, I appreciate, one of the nice things about being here is we find out how other people are doing things, and we find out that we might be a little bit behind the power curve. But I do have to be, I've always been a bit of a cause and effect person, and I see that when we come out of COVID-19, there's going to be, you know, the CND and the construction and these kind of things that if they're coming from commercial haulers, they're just going to be putting those fees right on the backs of homeowners when they go. And I understand that that's going to be, but it just seems like timing and opportunity being what it is, I don't necessarily agree with more equitable plans, but I do think that we, if we waited 10 years, I don't think in the middle of what we're calling our recovery, it might not be the bad time. I'm not against these fees, it might not be a good time. I'm not against these fees. Some of them I don't understand. Did we never have anything for site selection of towers on?
No, sir, and.
So we missed a lot of money in the last 10 years, haven't we?
Yes, you have.
Okay, I think that's what you were, that's what you were nice enough not to say.
I thought you were going to tell me that.
No, no, so, I mean, when staff looked at this, and I'm not, you know, I just wanted just to address it, and I'm fine with whatever the board wants to go with, but when staff looked at it, when Amy asked me to put together the fee schedule, of course, as your professional, I'm going to give you what I think is the, what the fee schedule should be. When we looked at the fee schedule, what we had noticed is 10 years was probably on the good side, but there were some instances, it was almost 15 years, where we haven't comprehensively looked at any of the fees. We were charging pretty low fees compared to even with the more like rural areas around us. So what we did is we broke it up into three classes, if you will, I'll just go into those so you'll know what the comparables were. So we looked at what I deem to be our neighbors. So we looked at Hoke, Moore, we looked at Sampson and Harnett. We pulled all of their fees, we looked at it. Then we looked at what I call the urban comparables. So we pulled Guilford and Durham, because we are, you know, the fifth largest county in the state by population. And then, we also looked at what we called economic comparables. So in that regard, I looked at onslaughts. So in that regard, I looked at Onslow County, and I looked at Pitt County, because we were especially looking at eastern North Carolina. So when we pulled those fees, we ran a, a whole number of scenarios on a, on a whole number of different ways that we could charge these fees based off what we're making as far as revenue now, what, what we are, what it's costing us in order to be able to do business. And what we came up with is what you see before you. So if you see fees of $3,000, and plus we were hearing from the development community that we were the, pretty much, I'll just put it to you bluntly, we were the cheapest person on the block. Yeah, so that, these are folks that work in Harnett, they work in Sampson, they work in Raleigh, they work in other areas. We were very mindful with our philosophy not to try to hit mom and pop really hard. So if you looked at Durham and Guilford as more urban counties, they obviously had a, their fees were really high comparatively. But when we looked at Sampson and Harnett and the folks around us, we were even lower than they were. And so what we were trying to propose is just try to find that middle ground where we were keeping in par with the urban counties, the economic comparables, and then the folks that are surrounding us. So like the folks who come and do business with us, I mean, they do business in Sampson and Harnett, so the fees that we propose, I don't think would be a huge shocker to, in that regard. So I'll just put that out there too. But we did a lot of analysis in this, in order to come up with this. But like some of the fees that you see, the $3,000, for example, we got counties all around us that charge that as far as a fee, because there's a lot of detailed analysis that goes into those reviews for those, and we weren't charging anything for those for the past 10 years, and I think we could be charging for that service.
And I guess, to me, the most important thing you said is, I guess you talked to the people who deal with this, which is the developers, so it's not a shock to them. I just didn't want it to be a shock to them that they walk in and it's zero and then it's 3,000. So you, I think when you said you were doing your comparison, you took into all of these, you talked to some of the developers and the people?
Well, we talked to a few people just who were coming through the door, but I think what Ms. Cannon had, like, suggested, which I had brought up during this discussion, was I was, I was very aware of what's going on. I know this is a shock, because a lot of folks haven't seen these types of fees in, well, 10 years. So I think the, like staging of coming in in January of 2021, we would do a campaign between now and then, and if it, if it passes, then in the six months between now and then, then we can maybe fine tune it if we need to, between now and January of 2021. But I think for right now, we were just trying to get it on the books and say, here are our new fees, and if we need to change it with the adoption, we can do a staggered up to January.
Got you. Thank you.
And I just, I just didn't want the fee structure to be an impediment to development either, because particularly with the wireless communication, 5G towers are going to be everywhere. Eventually, in five years, it's going to be everywhere, because it takes a lot more of them to get the same coverage as it does for the analog or whatever, what it is we're using now.
Sure.
But, but, but I'm, I'm glad you clarified that, because 3,000 was a, a big jump to me, and I see why now, you know, and those people can afford it. Mr. Keith, you got another question?
Yeah, two things. Rawls, as, as, the way we're set up now, we're also doing some of this work for the, some of the other towns, right? Hope Mills, are we doing some Hope Mills work?
Yes, we are.
So this, these fees would also go in to, for them too, right?
They would go into anything that we review. What I found coming into here is, I think there was an expectation that we were, what's the word I'm looking for, adopting or implementing a town's fee schedule. I think as a part of our mutual aid agreement, when a town signs on to us for us to provide the services, they'd agree to our fees for whatever services come through, you know, the door. So that's what we're doing.
And, and just for a point of clarification, even if the developers know, know this and, you know, people from outside counties, ultimately, all these fees get passed down to the end user. Developers aren't just going to suck it up, it increases their, their fees as they go. And that, and that was just some of the concern. I do see a lot of wisdom in a lot of these. I like a more simplistic fee schedule, and I think you're trying to do that. But we're, we're also going, we're, we're taking a bold step into technology in, in the planning. Will this help you with your efficiencies? Will the technology help you with your efficiencies on some of these fee schedules too?
Yes, i- if I understand you correctly, if I understand your question correctly.
Can you do more with less? With the technology?
I wouldn't say we, we could do, I think we could do more better. I, I don't think we could do it with less.
She's an English teacher.
I mean, I think the technology will, will provide a platform where we could be able to potentially turn things around faster. There would be less instances, for example, that if we issue permits and we were supposed to have this person sign off, and we have to call it in or revoke permits or halt construction, I think, I think that will go away. I will say that as a part of the inter-gov discussions that we have had with the consultant, our current fee schedule is, just to put it as straightforward as I can, is extremely cumbersome for them to be able to put into the platform.
We've heard that a number of ways.
Yeah, so this will simplify a lot of it. Our philosophy was as well too, that as a customer service item, when somebody comes in right now, we have to charge them like per service. Like, if you do some sort of work that requires a, a mechanical permit, a plumbing permit, I mean, we charge you individually. So what we did with this fee schedule is we've consolidated, we said we're going to do away with that, we're going to charge you one fee. So if you're doing HVAC, you know you're paying $200 for the permit. You would probably have to pay $200 now, for example, but you're paying it having to pay three separate permits, we're just going to do it as one fee for all three of them. So we took all the instances that we could to consolidate that down together to make it easier for people to understand what they're being charged for when they come through the door.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Howard? Okay, Ms. Cannon? Thank you, Rawls.
Thank you.
There's also additional fee increases in the Public Health Department. These were approved by the Board of Health on January 21st.
Which page?
I'm sorry, excuse me, page 68. Many of these follow the Medicare rates, also Blue Cross and Blue Shield contracts. And really, they did an analysis as well and looked at what other health departments The next page, on page 69, we go into the fire inspection category. One of the area that we are trying to make a change is in the area of public schools. All public schools are required to have a fire inspection, and so we're asking that the board waive those fees. It's just an additional cost for the school system. We, most counties do not charge schools for those inspections, so we're asking for the fees to be waived for the public schools as well as the fire, volunteer fire departments.
Can you tell me how much of a savings that is? Because, I mean, i- if, if that's a savings, if you're talking about, I don't know how much they, they've got, how many buildings they have and?
They have quite a few. Let me ask.
And even the outside, because that's a, that's a savings to the school system that, they don't have to come out of their budget on, so that's kind of like revenue to me.
Okay, that's a good question, and we'll have that at the next session.
Thank you.
In the Finance Department, we're actually asking for a change in the return check fee to be in compliance with the North Carolina general statutes, some changes in the Register of Deeds, and that is really to be consistent with other Register of Deeds divisions within the state. Our next area is in the area of solid waste. Our solid waste director's not here this evening because she's still working on the fire at the landfill, otherwise she would have been here this evening. So I told her that was more important tonight than being here. If there are any specific questions, most of these are to be a little bit closer to market and to get closer to their actual cost of providing that service. Again, the solid waste fund, as you remember, is like the Crown Complex Fund, it's an enterprise fund, and the fees are established to cover the cost of providing the service.
I, I'm just, I, I'm concerned about the 300% increase or?
The surcharge.
Surcharge on the C and D, because I believe as we start growing again and people start getting in, I, I think that's going to be, it'd be nice if we could delay these till we get some stability in our, and know what next year looks like. That was my only, that was my only concern on all the fee schedules.
And, Ms. Keith, I, I understand, I think we, instead of just not doing the entire, is maybe do at least half. I mean, we can phase it in, because at some point, our landfill is going to be full, and, you know, the less we charge, the more they're going to bring, even from other places. Instead of me taking it over the whole county, I might just bring it on down to Cumberland, because I pay, I pay less according to where you are. You know, if you ride across the line, I gotta pay a ton over in Harnett County, over in, in, what's it called, I bring it here, and our landfill, then fills up. We end up on the back end paying more than they're going to pay on the front end. So that would be, I, I mean, that's a concern of mine. I saw the 300, so I wouldn't just wipe out the whole increase, but possibly some of it, because you don't want to get so low that they just bring it from these other counties and say, hey, I'll dump it in Cumberland.
And, and, Ms. Sheriff, I can address. I, I understand, you know, but, but not knowing what our income is going to be looking like, and, and C and D comes from commercial haulers normally, and, and that will, will just be passed on. But have we done that actuary to see what Harnett County and Sampson County, what they are charging? Because if I'm not mistaken, and I know our landfill, I, I don't think the city of Fayette uses us for all their landfill, or do they now?
Yes.
Okay, that, they, at one time, they were not. So, but a- as we go forward on this, it would be nice to, just to make sure that we are at least consistent.
Comparable.
Comparable with, with the other counties. I, I think anytime that everybody's hurting now, we all know that, everybody's hurting, we don't know what our income will be in the future, putting additional fees on is, just seems like a little, a little rough.
Not, not to take away from what we're talking about here, but at, at some point, I think it'd be a good idea for this board to get a study of, of exactly what our landfill life is. I remember years ago, we studied it at one time, we, we thought we had 18 years left at that time, and recycling added to the years. And, and now some of the municipalities have discontinued recycling, as I understand, and I'm thinking there's going to be an impact there. And so really, it'd be interesting information for us at some point, not during budget season, but you know, sometime when we're not doing anything else, that'd be nice to hear.
So that's a good point, Mr. Chairman. We've been working with Amanda Botter since she came in, looking for stra- additional strategies to preserve the landfill space. We've bought compactors that provide greater compaction than our previous compactors. We're also looking for strategies such as mining some of our previous sales that are not Subtitle D. So she, Amanda has a lot of creative ideas about how to extend the landfill life, and that's certainly a topic we'd like to bring back, maybe at another work session, agenda session after the first of the year, after July 1st.
Right, whichever year, right. Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir.
Proceed on.
So that ends our discussion of the fees. I think the next section leads us into community agencies. That's on page 73. Again, due to limited recurring funding, we held the level at last year's level, no new agencies were added or increases.
Go ahead and raise it high, don't be timid.
I feel like, you know.
I won't give you a pass.
I want to talk a little bit about the Council of, Cumberland County Coordinating Council on Older Adults. This is under our COG, right?
No, sir, it's a separate agency, but it, they do partner with one another on providing agent, aging services.
Okay. All right.
That's what Muzo feels.
No, no, I, PTSD, oh no.
I got you, no problem.
Would you, sorry, you threw?
No, no, well, I, I was going to go into, apparently, we're trying to make some changes with our Council of Government, and, and their task, and, and some of these things that are on here could very easily come under their umbrella. And I didn't know if we had gotten that far yet, and, and whether or not the city of Fayette was considering partnering with us on that.
And I can answer that question. We had a Mid-Carolina Council of Governments go-to meeting last week, a board meeting. And as you may recall, Commissioner Council is the chair of that board. Mr. Hembry, as the new director, has been working on looking at functions that would be appropriate to be included under the Council of Government. He's, he also did a presentation to the Fayette City Council about their interest and willingness to be a member of the COG. And so Mr. Hembry basically made a presentation and suggested a three-year phase in. And I believe that the city manager may have included a third of the fees in his recommended budget to start that process.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
COG.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, our next section is the Capital Investment Fund. We have, as I mentioned the other day, on page 78 and 79, you can see the detailed revenues. The recommended budget for the Capital Investment Fund is $24.7 million. We have detailed schedules starting on page 80. As you may recall, and Vicki mentioned this a few moments ago, in the creation of the Capital Investment Fund, not only do we budget your very large capital projects, but we felt it was appropriate to move maintenance, repair, smaller capital projects into the CIF Fund. And those items are really, have been moved from the general fund to really just have your operating budget in the general fund. On page 80, we have a listing of the maintenance and repairs. These are maintenance and repairs for county facilities. Departments make requests for maintenance and repair. Our engineering and infrastructure department, along with our facilities management, they do an evaluation as well. So some of these projects come through our facilities management. The total request was $1.5 million, and we were able to fund through priority number 21 with a recommended total of $936,000. How were they prioritized?
Yes.
I have Mr. A.J. Riddle here. A.J., would you come forward and talk about the process that you go through to prioritize these M and R projects?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Manager, thank you. I believe Chairman Fairclough, you asked a question regarding the?
Yeah, I just wondered how the, what the prioritar?
Yes, sir, we prioritize.
The process.
We prioritize them based on a different perspectives, evaluation of the safety, structural needs, and aesthetics, as well as the accessibility to the building, and depending on if it's a desire from the department, like a, a want, or if it is an actual need that would improve our infrastructure.
Okay. So that's, is that, is that a group effort, or is that?
It's, it's a team effort. We have different departments, such as, you know, we have different departments that submit multiple requests, we ask them to prioritize those requests, and then we also prioritize them internally with facilities, maintenance staff, and the engineering and infrastructure staff.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any, any further questions while he's up there?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. On the next page, page 82, we have our technology expenditures. As you may recall, the board has made a commitment over the last couple of years to advance our technology, to improve customer service, and to create efficiencies. I certainly couldn't answer any questions about the M and R, and I wouldn't begin to answer for technology. So we have our IT Director, Mr. Keith Todd. our IT Director, Mr. Keith Todd, here, if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions, any questions for not Amy?
Okay. The next page, schedule on page 83, is basically our Capital Improvement Plan. And these are our projects that total greater than $100,000. The M and R projects are less than 100, but these are greater than 100. Again, these are brought forward in multiple avenues. They may be brought forward through a departmental request. It may be brought forward through engineering. And so the total requested this year, or recommended this year, out of the five-year plan, is $1,890,000.
I just had one question, because I guess on Monday, when you were talking, was about, you'll find it, child support. So when we're talking about these Bradford renovations of $100,000, wouldn't that not, shouldn't we do that? I mean, you were going to study about moving child support and stuff, so the $100,000 on that and the movement of child support seems to go together, I guess.
Is this the clinic?
Is this the?
It, it's the clinic. So this, this, I just wanted to make sure I was correct. So this is 226 Bradford. It's the old southeastern speech and hearing building, and right now we have our Novant Clinic in there. We are...
Not where, not the one on the end. I got you. You don't have to do, okay, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm going building.
We're out of space for training.
Got you.
And then finally, on page 84, as you know, debt service is paid out of the Capital Investment Fund, and this is a detail of our different debt service. Debt service for next year totals $12,700,000, and you can see that our debt drops off with, unless we do additional financing. But all those funds stay within the Capital Investment Fund. That's how you build capacity in the Capital Investment Fund, so that you can continue to prioritize projects and add capital projects. The final area, Mr. Chairman, we went through a detail, the enterprise funds in the presentation. I guess the final general fund category really relates to education. And as I mentioned Monday in the presentation, for both Fayette Technical Community College, as well as Cumberland County Schools, we just simply did not have the recurring revenue. As you know, I mentioned Monday about the significant revenue shortfalls that we're facing this year in ad valorem taxes, motor vehicles, and sales tax. Over the last couple of years, for many years, the funding agreement has been based on the collections from motor vehicles and ad valorem taxes. We're actually budgeting very little growth in that category. We tried to employ the same philosophy in computing the calculation for the schools. This year, their appropriation is $80,553,000, and that is 43.47% of motor vehicles and ad valorem taxes. We use that same percentage against next year's revenue projections, and that's how we came up with the appropriation and the recommended budget of $80,711,000. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The only comment I have is, you know, I thought that you did an excellent job doing that, because as I look around the state, look at Mecklenburg, look at Wake, in terms of the cuts that they have, in terms of being able to give some is tremendous, and I have to compliment, I'd just like to compliment staff for being able to, to look at that and do that, because, I mean, I'm looking at, I think I saw even up in Terrell County, they're about to go bankrupt. I think it was Terrell County the other day, but, so to be able to not only hold the line, but to give some, I think, finance and staff, y'all did an excellent job. I just, I think you just need to be complimented on that. I'd be remiss if I didn't.
Mr. Booth.
To what Mr. Adams said, in, he and I have been sharing some messages, and I think he sent them to a lot of the board members this week, about North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, other newspaper articles throughout the state, and not only are they not, just being able to not hold the line, but they're taking substantial cuts, both education, hospital systems, you know, everyone's taking huge hits. And I think it's very relevant that our county manager showed that, you know, you can't just say 80 million, 85 million, 89 million, 92 million. You have to look and see how much was in the pocketbook to even, you know, go in and get the, the funds to begin with. And since we're holding the line at pre-COVID, pre-everything issues on the same amount percentage-wise that we gave them last year as this year, that's, that's huge. That's huge, and I agree to squeeze that out again. Y'all should be commended to be able to find that, that fund source.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the, the final section of the book really centers around our two enterprise fund. First of all, solid waste management. There's some information about that department. The total recommended budget is $12.2 million. You can see the revenue breakdown on page 90. We also appropriated a small amount of fund balance, $1.9 million of fund balance. Most of that's related to the FEMA funds that we received. Those FEMA funds were received in a prior fiscal year, and we'll be moved forward to purchase the significant capital this year. So that relates to the appropriation of fund balance. On page 91, you can see the breakdown in the different cost centers of the different revenue sources. And then on page 92, we have the expenditure budget, and then the cost centers for solid waste, or the categories.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Manager, can we, are you ready to answer questions about solid waste expenses?
I'll do my best, yes, sir.
And maybe there's a timing issue or what, but payroll increased from 2019 to the recommended budget this time by almost 35, 40%. Was there additional things? Did we stop doing contracting? Did something happen where the payroll went up so high?
Were those the marketed? Those are based on market adjustments that were done in fiscal year 2020, and it affected several employees. So remember, Commissioner Keith, you remember, last year, we started Phase One of the market adjustments. What, just, there were several classifications at the solid waste division where the turnover was extremely high, but the minimum pay was very low. So they were included in that Phase One market adjustment, and those were implemented for FY '20. Is And our Finance Director also has some additional information. Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, so the comparison of fiscal year 19 actual to 21 budget, 19 actual, if you'll remember, has a high vacancy rate. So there were many vacancies in the department, so we didn't have high, or we didn't meet the budget. So I think that's...
It's twofold.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would point out that the recommended budget for this year is actually less than the original budget for last year. Is that correct? Is that how I interpret that?
If you take out those FEMA reimbursements, yes.
I don't see, all I see is personnel. That's all I see.
Oh, personnel, yes.
I see recommended 4,028, and last year's original budget was 4,194.
Yes, sir.
Which is a decrease. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Page 94 and 90, 94, we have the Capital Improvement Plan for the solid waste department, and we also have the Capital Improvement Plan for the Crown Complex. For fiscal year 21, in the area of solid waste, we're recommending $250,000. We're $100,000 for the borrow pit excavation, and then $150,000 for landfill master planning.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I'm just messing with you.
And then for fiscal year 21, for the Crown Complex, we're recommending $520,000. Obviously, the, the requests were significant, but due to limited funding, again, to food and beverage and occupancy tax reductions, we could only fund $520,000. Then we have our debt service projections for the enterprise fund. Mr. Chairman, that, those are most of the detailed schedules for the recommended budget. We're happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, that's really all we had this evening. We're prepared to answer any other questions that the board may have about the recommended budget, or if you have additional information that you would like to have prepared, we're certainly ready to hear that as well.
Anything coming for us at this time? If not, remind you that the next budget meeting is at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 8th, where we'll have our public hearing. We'll have that in this room. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, at 7:00 PM.
Right, and that'll, and we will hear from the public at that time, and, and we, we will continue workshop mode after that, after we finish that public hearing. And, yes, we do have an attorney-client matter to discuss, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. And move in second to go into closed session with the statute...
143, 318, 11A3.
Okay, in discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Board will now go into closed session.
You may.
Well, we'll take a five-minute break, because there will be some logistics that we have to do to be ready for closed session.